The first on the agenda is the A and R plan for outback engineering regarding the A and R submittal for Pinecrest Drive, Seaward Place, and Hickory Lane.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Daniel Viera. I'm an attorney in Easton. I hope you won't hold that against me. I'm actually just going to ask to continue this to another day because it turns out our engineer was unavailable and couldn't make a gig.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah. I see you have other things on your agenda, so we're not here just for this.
We do.
So we're just hoping for a January date if possible.
Okay. You can check with this young lady over here?
That would be January 9th.
Sounds good.
Will it work?
Yep.
Nice. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
You bet.
We want a motion to continue.
The next one.
What? A motion to continue?
It's an open meeting on a public hearing, so I don't think you should send anything in.
No.
Okay. But he's got one more.
You have another one?
That you have to continue to. You have two of them.
Yes. The first two items on the agenda, both A and R. Got the same.
Yeah.
With the same result?
With the same engineer. So if we could continue both of those to January, then that would be perfect.
Thank you.
I think we should make a motion to continue them, just because action's required and that'll be our action.
And the date, these are already late. These are already like 28, 25, 26 days from when they were submitted.
Okay. Let's have a motion for that.
Motion, we accept the applicant's request for a continuance on the first two items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Number three on the agenda is to review the following zoning board of appeal petition for a permit. And I don't think we have anyone here for that.
We're just reviewing what ZVA looked at. Is that what I got gathered from the plan here? It actually looks like a nice plan to take eight lots and make them into four lots.
Kathy, is this ZVA just looking for us to make a recommendation or?
Yes, if you have any comments on it. This is on their agenda next week, and if they vote to approve this, to allow this, then it will come back to you to officially allow the lot lines to be changed. So they're just allowing change of views, really, of the nonconforming.
Would we run a request, anything on that, if it can? I think we should recommend approval or whatever. To say we have no comment, but if it comes back to us, I would want maybe see driveway locations coming along with the roadways. It's probably too early to ask for that, but I just hate to have an applicant come with. That's a pretty scant plan.
Maybe we would request a little more information on the...
Is that something we can just have Kathy pass along?
It's something you can make a motion on.
Is there anything other than driveways we might want to have added to that plan, sync?
I haven't opened it.
How about a little more information? If they would provide us with a little more information, we might be able to make a better determination on what they are looking for, you know?
Well, did you look at the general plans they have there?
I saw that.
This is existing, and then they're going to just make it into four lots with four houses, which looks good. Looks like a good improvement.
Yeah.
And I think for tonight's recommendations, I think we don't really need to, other than say we have no further comment based on the subdivision, when it comes back to us for site plan review or subdivision, we would want to see driveway locations, but I don't know if that's a motion tonight.
Yeah.
Going from that to that.
Yeah. Three of them are Form As of the four proposed.
And they're all more conforming.
They're all nonconforming.
They're all pre-existing nonconforming, and the improvements are more conforming.
Yes.
Which I think is great.
I think it is so. But if they give us a little more information, it would be better off.
Yeah.
That's a motion.
Yeah. I'd second it.
Whoa, baby.
Just locate the wells and...
Driveways, wells, setbacks.
So you have no comment?
We like the plan so far, but when it comes back to us, we would like more information for our site plan approval.
Yeah. What?
This is pretty smart.
Yeah. I like the fact that they're making it less nonconforming. Next on the agenda is a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Well, just so everyone in TV land knows, the last time we looked at this, we were in the low sevens, and now we're in the low sixes, 1%.
Subsidized.
So the new counting system caught up to. It's not good. We have fewer subsidized. We have a smaller subsidized percentage than we had, than we thought we had a year ago. So I don't see anything wrong with the numbers that are there. It's just the year-round housing units seems to be higher than what I remember.
Or lower.
Higher. No, the total, the 3852. I thought we were around 3,300. This is 500 more.
Yeah, it's not like we made any more housing units.
It's not like we did it, but the year-round, we count differently from year to year depending on stuff. It's not in our control. They count them differently. The subsidized always gets counted the same way, but the year-round could have been, can easily be different when we have so many vacation homes on them.
Okay. So we want to say thank you to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
No.
What?
Excellent. Good.
Yeah. We have to do better or...
We've got to stay with it.
Yeah, I know.
Keep pushing.
It puts us deeper in a hole.
Yeah.
Okay. So number five is to...
Oh, I went to this.
What?
I went to a meeting with Maureen.
Okay.
And the person from this codification company, which is a, it's a national company. They do this for everybody. This is not an attempt to redo anything. This is just, they want to put the general bylaws, the zoning bylaws, the subdivision rules that we use.
Toll laws, yeah.
Any of the health department codes, noise.
Ordinances and things like that.
Ordinances, yeah. All of the town stuff to try to get it into one place where they can, where you can, you know, just ask it to, you know, throw in keywords and it brings stuff up. It's a two-year process. It shouldn't affect, if something comes up, perhaps during the process, some questions might come up with, how come this bylaw is funny? But, and then we'll deal with it, but no one's going to be looking for it. The total bill is something like $8,000 or $8,500 for two years. So it's just a matter of exactly what's behind the computer when you go on, when you go on to the Lakeville website.
So they're going to create a database with our existing information?
That is, that's what they're budgeted for, and that's what they plan to do. But during the process, they have to be set up to be able to, well, who do we talk to about this one? And I just personally guarantee you that if anything changes on any of the zoning bylaws, each and every one of you will know several months in advance. And we deal with it as it goes, but no one's planning to...
They really can't change one without proper methods, right?
Oh, we can't change anything. Everything still changes the same way. We have to have public meetings. We have to have, you know, warrant items, and we have to have a town vote, a town meeting vote. That all stays the same, but how it presents on the website is going to be different. And it sounds good, you know?
Okay.
You know, to recommend we say nice things about it or support the effort. It's Lillian's, actually. She's going to carry all the, she's the one that's trying to keep the record straight. She's the one that proposed the money and got the, she's carrying the ball.
And it was a town meeting?
It was. It was.
Yes. And I just want to make sure that the bylaws or the rules and regs, they follow from year to year, and we don't drop anything off. Can I mention that in my email, I believe?
Yep.
Okay, so that's good.
Absolutely with you on that one.
Yes. So number six on the agenda is the minutes for October 10th, 2019. Has anyone read these and are very comfortable with them?
I read them online, Brian, and a motion to approve the minutes from October 10th, 2019.
Okay. Well, I will, having a motion and a second or call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five on the agenda is, is it five? Six. No. What?
Seven.
So number 7A goes into 7A conditions. 7A conditions says the applicant will submit a notice of intent for January 14th, 2020. So that's where we are with that. So we are waiting to see what happens on January 2020, correct?
I'm sorry. I was reading. Could you repeat?
Okay. Item 7A. On December 10th, the Conservation Commission held a hearing. On the reference site, the applicant submitted a request for determination of applicability, RDA, for the demolition of existing facilities and construction of a 66-unit residential complex. Several structures and activities were identified and determined to be within the 100-foot buffer zone. As a result, the Conservation, the Commission voted unanimously to approve the demolition-only portion of the RDA with several conditions C attached. One of the conditions is to require the filing of a notice of intent. The purpose of this requirement is to allow the Commission to include its list of special conditions and allow oversight during construction. It is also recommended that some combination of signage, fencing be required in areas with steep slopes. These areas are subject to erosion in order of public water supply.
So being from the Conservation Commission, yes, that is accurate. We did approve them with an RDA for the demolition of the buildings that they want to take down that are within the buffer zone. Some buildings are outside the buffer zone that are not within the Conservation Commission's purview. So it was really only one building, an existing summer house or something on the southeast or east side of the island.
Northeast side, yeah.
Northeast, sorry. And we, because of the overall scale, size of the project, and that there were a number of things, within the 100-foot buffer zone, we asked them for the construction of the process to file an NOI, which they're in process, and we have them on the agenda for the January 14th meeting. And we fairly diligently reviewed the plans and gave everybody on the board a chance to look at them and make suggestion for changes, which they're really, other than some minor fencing things at some of those steep slopes, there were really no changes. So we don't anticipate a lot of pushback at the January 14th meeting for the approval of the NOI for construction to continue.
Okay. So are they going to put, like, construction fence, or are they going to put silt fence, waddles?
We approved, the demolition plan had a specific silt fence layout.
Yeah.
At the locations where the demolition was going to happen, a little bit beyond. Some of it would not be installed where trees needed to be taken down until they were going to get to that portion. Some of it's during construction. They had two separate plans for the siltation barrier. One would be demolition only. They would be satisfied, the board, the agent was satisfied with that plan for the RDA for demolition only, and then they would have the, basically the entire island gets wrapped with siltation barrier for the construction portion of the plan. And we would review that before construction began.
Awesome.
So that's what we talked about. That's where we're at. And they just, we really felt more comfortable with the NOI document with its, through the registry deeds, than the RDA was not so binding. And they were agreeable to that, and we did give them permission with the demolition on the RDA.
Perfect. Okay. That's all conservation? It's not really planning board? So I don't need, I just wanted to mention, if I could add to Mr. Knox, I don't know if you can agree with this, but basically, Mr. Knox on the board was very helpful in stating to the board that night that if there's any changes of any substance, let's tell these people this is December 10th. And there wasn't any, which means the buildings and, you know, the plan is 99.999 there as far as the pieces that matter. So for your review, you're really looking at a finished plan from a conservation's perspective. There is some, there are going to be three pages of standard conditions, is what I think one of the members said. And there may be some other conditions, you know, because of the sensitivity of the site, which will work with. A couple of nice points came out, which was in a couple of the steep slope areas, maybe putting a split rail fence, just for public safety. And also, it provides us a place to mouth the signage that there's not to be any interaction with the water body there. But I just want for the planning board's purpose, you know, the road is where it is, the buildings are where they are. I'm talking about the new ones that are, and I just, and would you agree with that, Mr. Knox, as far as that, what we left with for that?
That was my takeaway.
I just want the chairman to be familiar with that.
This is also, you read a letter from the fire department?
No. That's next.
Do you want me to read it, or you want to read it?
Go ahead.
From Chief O'Brien. He had put a letter in. Dear Chairman Hoag, this letter has been written to provide notification that the Lakeville Fire Department has not received sufficient time to review the submitted plan for the proposed project at 57 Long Point Road. Fire Department is in the process of researching code related to fire department access to the building. The latest version of the plan was submitted to the department just this week. Please contact Lakeville Fire Department should additional information or clarification be required.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, just so you know, these buildings will be fully commercially sprinkled? The new ones. The new ones. I understand that. So that's one major thing. And there's access around 360 degrees around the buildings. So we will work with the fire department to make sure they're aware of all that. He's key. Yeah. But I just want you to know that there's 360 degrees access, and there is full sprinklers. And of course, they have the proper alarms and, you know, enunciators and lights. And everything will be NFBA approved, and there's a protocol you follow. I know. Which I'm sure you're familiar with. I am. Very well aware.
It looks like there's a letter from ZVA for correspondence between Kathy and Nick Laney.
Yeah.
That he didn't have a chance to review the plans, or won't have a chance.
And how many units?
66.
Okay. I was going to, in my presentation tonight, I was going to kind of run through the chronological of what took place, if you'd like. I'd like to...
No, it was just the 66.
Well, it ended up at 66. It started at 84.
Right.
How soon do you want to get going? Well, Mr. Chairman, what's happened really is, and of course, the Conservation Commission was very trying to work with us on a kind of a midway so we could move things along. Right now, we're in the middle of preparing the buildings for demolition. I've done a demolition permit, although I'm not going to act on it until such time the Conservation, I wanted to get through tonight, and I wanted to get through the Conservation, verifying the wetland, I mean, the siltation protection before we did anything. At the same time, I have to temporarily decommission the water service to the building. I have to temporarily decommission the source service to the building. A lot of money was put into those utilities by the Toll family, and those are about 98% of what they built there new, which is what DEP, why DEP supported the repurposing of this project. Has to be protected, and, you know, you just can't go shut things off. You have to... I know. You have to have people that really know what they're doing. So the operator of the plant is a company called Whitewater, which you may be familiar with.
I've heard of them, yeah.
They do a lot of public water supplies and public sewer supplies, or sewer treatment plants. Kevin has, they're going to take care of that. Robert B. Hour, who's the person who did, who did all the original site work, is going to do any selective removals of the undergrounds where we need to be siloed. And they already have complete site, they did, they built it.
Yep.
So I was going to use them. The demolition, Mr. Chairman, was handled by G. Lopes and Sons.
Yep.
G. Lopes out of Tonkin. They have their own transfer facility and everything else. They're very, very competent contractors when it comes to disposing related. And so I'm putting real top-notch contractors in there, and then I have a very good general contractor. I'm a general contractor myself, but over the years, I've really made some good relationships with other general contractors, so I can focus on meetings like tonight and doing the legwork and let somebody else do the, chase the subs around. And he's out of Milford, mess. So...
What's his name?
Lobosir Ferrer Construction, Kevin Lobosir. A really good, medium-sized contractor. He's done a lot of work for me, and we're actually involved in a couple of deals together. Very, very good, highly respected in the Bellingham, Milford areas and that whole area. They build all over, but that's their biggest area. They do a lot of work. As an example, they're the preferred contractor for Milford Hospital, and the cancer center there, all that. So very competent. So I'm trying to bring a real top-notch program here to the town, and, you know, we're not looking to, I'm bringing people that I know are capable, that I know can do the job, and not reinvent the wheel. So that's, I want you to be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, that's a long answer, isn't it, to a question?
Yes.
And my answer is, is I really need to get, I mean, I, we, as I explained to the Conservation Commission, you know, I've been at this for a while, you know, about a year now when I first, it's been over a year.
It's been over a year.
Over a year, okay. And I've managed to get the bank to, you know, to leave the Toll family alone, let them stay there, and I've managed to keep them, you know, from causing problems here, you know, just all over the place. And at the same time, when I'm doing that, I've been working with the various boards. Obviously, the first board we had to go to was the Board of Appeals, because without that, there's nothing really to talk about. You'd be basically, if they didn't go forward with this, you'd basically be looking at what's there.
Correct. Correct.
And repurposing in its existing configuration, which I don't think anybody really agrees with, 'cause it's kind of something that was built piecemeal over time, and it's really outlived its usefulness. So, once we received that permit, and that is, as this gentleman was asking about how many units, we originally asked for eighty-four, we got through the negotiations with that board and hearings and so forth, it got reduced to seventy-four. And then, of course, the next issue was to sit with DEP. DEP took an awful long time, not because they were in any way negative on the project, it just, nothing happens quickly at the state level, and those of you that are in this know that. So, but they were very, very thorough and they're very fair to us, but because of vacations over the summer, and this, and this guy couldn't see this, and, you know, you lose two weeks here, three weeks there, finally, they gave us all the permits that we needed, and affirmed the project at sixty-six units. Once that was done, Kevin expeditiously prepared the plans that are in front of you tonight, and I hired the architects, well, you remember the original, I think I brought the original architect in, Brett Mogul, but now we've got almost fifty percent development plans, so we're, you know, we're able to bid and, and things of that nature, the different trades. So we've got, you know, we're very advanced on the plans, we're very advanced on the site plan, obviously, and we need to, I really need to move the project forward, because there is a timeframe, and there's a lot of other things that are at play, so the Conservation Commission understood that, and they said, well, you know, I had asked to do everything under an RDA, 'cause there's a very little impact with what we're doing from a wetlands, I'm just talking the wetlands now, the wetlands perspective. There's a couple of, as Mr. Knox pointed out, there are a couple of encroachments here and there into the buffer, but for the most part, the development has really been, actually, development's been reduced from what's there now, even from what's there today, it's down to twenty percent in curvies, that's count and everything. So, they came up with this concept of, okay, we'll go ahead and, and kinda met me halfway and said, okay, go do the demo, and we'll, and we don't see, they all burst positive, they gave me very positive feedback and said, we don't see any issues, there's nothing here, other than we wanna make sure that the normal conditions that we give every other person in town are on your project as well. And I could see the, you know, I, I understood the reasoning for that. On the other hand, they also gave me the ability to move forward with my project by, by moving the demolition forward and things of that nature. So, it, it was a compromise, but it worked out well, and I, I fully expect on the fourteenth that would have a violent notice of intent. Obviously, typically, when you're working with boards, everything's subject to the other boards anyway, so, you know, if you, if this board was so inclined to grant us some approval, either, you know, at the whatever meeting, that it would be subject to, you know, obviously, the Board of Appeals decision, and also be subject to the Conservation decision, and also subject to DEP's decision. I fully expect.
Can I interrupt, we got like, two more letters here we haven't read into the record, if you don't mind that I would do that?
I hope so.
We have a letter from the Town Administrator, there's another one from Open Space, we had read the fire department one. Letter from the Town Administrator says regarding this project, at the, the Board of Selectmen's December ninth, two thousand nineteen meeting, they received the site plan for that development known as Island, it's fifty-seven Longpoint Road. The site plans were delivered to their office the same day as our meeting, and were presented to the Selectmen under new business. The memo requested comments back to the Planning Board on December twelfth, it's only three days difference, typically, the Planning Board allows ten days for comment from various departments, boards, committees, commissions to review site plans. This is an important project of town, the Selectmen would like to emphasize the importance of that ten-day review period for adequate time for plan review. They had a brief discussion and had no comment at this time, but I do think that this Board of Selectmen wants to take more time to review, I don't know when their next meeting is.
They were very positive at the meeting.
Yeah.
Whatever that's worth.
What?
They were very positive at the meeting.
Oh, Selectmen?
Yes.
How come I don't have that letter?
It's, it's labeled seven D.
It doesn't look like a letter, it's just a.
I don't have it on my package.
It's from seven D.
I don't have it in my package.
Here you go.
I missed it the first time, Your Honor.
That's not it either.
It was two of them.
I don't have it in my package.
And Kathy, would you have an update from ZVA, or are they still waiting for Nick Laney? I see something in here.
From ZVA?
Maybe I'm wrong, it's just 'cause of your email.
Oh.
You were sent a request to Nick Laney, and his response, "I'm not able to review the plans until mid-January due to previous commitments and the holidays. Review will take a few weeks. If the board wants me to still do a review, let me know and provide an estimate."
So you're looking to go with demo?
Right, I can't.
Pretty soon?
Yes, I, but, you know, with Mr. Laney's, I did never saw that letter until you just read it.
Okay.
Well, it's just today's letter.
Well, I understand that, but is there another consultant that we can go to? Because, you know.
I could grab another consultant, I think. We haven't, but I could try.
Because that, you know, when you can't even start, when they're.
No, 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 no. This is, this is for the construction.
Right.
Not for the demo.
Right, no, I understand.
How soon were you looking to do the demo?
Well, I was looking to do the demo immediately, within two weeks, and, and obviously, I'm, you know, I got the holidays here, too.
Have you talked to the Board of Health?
I have a demo permit from the Building Inspector.
No, I know. On the new construction, have you talked to the Board of Health?
Yes, we've been, we've been.
We have plans of, we have not been back to the Board of Health with the modification to the system.
Yeah.
Because what we're using, the MBBR treatment system.
Yeah.
Remains.
Yeah.
The leaching system, we did per test with the Board of Health, and we did a title-five inspection, which is going into the Board of Health.
Yeah.
And we uncovered one corner of the leaching system.
Yes.
So the treatment system stays the same, the septic tanks stay the same, we are gonna remove eight trenches of the, from the septic system and add four. So we have modified plans that have to go to the Board of Health, that is really minor.
Have you gone to any of the, the site drainage with them?
We have not gone through the site drainage with Board of Health.
Have you, are you planning on it?
We certainly can.
No, are you planning on it? Has the Board of Health asked you to go through the site drainage with them?
They have not asked us to.
Pardon me?
They have not asked us to, but they're, we, I'll talk to the Board of Health.
So if they, if they're not planning on it, that's, you know.
Most of it's already been addressed.
Yes, sir.
You know.
I know.
Yeah, and we don't have an agent right now.
Pardon me?
We don't have an agent right now.
We have Nick Laney, but Nick Laney's.
I mean, our health, the, on the health side.
Board of Health, we don't have an agent right now?
And we just lost, we lost him to the state.
What?
We lost him, he went to the state.
Correction on that, we have somebody filling in, say it off.
Okay.
Who? For free time.
Who?
I forget his name, I think it's Dennis something.
Okay. Okay. So if we're doing, we're trying to get this site plan review going, and Nick Laney's gonna be a little, I know, I know, getting inside, you know, wide sided.
I just showed up, Brian.
Sorry. But, but, but what we, what we, we have here is, Nick Laney is, he's taking a little bit of sabbatical, he's got some previous commitments, and he's got some.
Holidays coming up.
Yeah, holidays. So, like, the middle of January is when he would be able to review the plans, so it probably, probably wouldn't be a, an answer till the end of January, and these folks are trying to get rolling down there at Island Terrace. And I, I know all about the timeframe and everything else, and we wanna try to get rolling, so they can get it up and going, and they can build by spring.
Actually, our goal was to, you know, we work twelve months of the year.
I know, I do, too.
We, we don't.
You wanna build and get it up by spring.
We heat the concrete, we do everything that's necessary.
So.
Is there anybody else that we've used in the past?
We haven't, really. We've used a couple of different people, but Nick Laney is kind of our go-to guy, and he's, conservation goes to, what?
And he's already done one on this particular project.
On the property?
All he has to do is change the numbers. He's the one that wrote sixty-six units was the ten thousand, he already knows all the, knows all the numbers and all the.
From the new development?
From, from last spring.
When they came in with their first initial?
It was for an eighty-eight unit one. We just have to update this from eighty-eight to sixty-six.
Nick did the full review for the ZVA, and the other thing, I think, I think what we all need to keep in mind is, this project was reviewed for years, you know.
Yeah.
With DEP and with Nick and other prior to my involvement, and most of that is remaining, I mean, almost all of it, so, I mean, how many times can you look at the same apple? I guess.
Yeah. There is one more letter we should probably read into the record from Open Space, and then go down that list if I can make a suggestion or two, if you don't mind?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so Open Space Committee also put a letter towards the Planning Board regarding this property at Island Terrace, former, former Island Terrace Nursing Home. "The pristine beauty of this site is immediate, and its immediate access to many acres of walking trails is thanks to a large expenditure of public funds, especially by the state and the town of Lakeville. The expenditure was made primarily to protect the water quality, but was also served to provide wildlife protection and recreation opportunity. Therefore, for the guaranteed protection of the water quality in the great ponds and the wildlife, the ponds and the adjacent land support, we are asking the Planning Board to require this project to be contingent on a conservation restriction on the entire Aswan, Aswan set pond shoreline of the property to a depth of fifty feet. The conservation restriction should stipulate natural vegetation only, no soil amendments, no vegetation removal except for invasive species, no water access by residents, pets, or non-residents visitors, no structures, permanent or temporary, and no activity at all which might in any way allow contaminants of any sort into the water, unless specifically authorized by the holders of the restriction for the maintenance of the healthy natural state of the land so protected or the waters of the pond. The conservation restriction would be held by the Lakeville Conservation Commission or a land trust organization, which as the Wildlands Trust would be accompanied and an endowment that if properly invested would sufficiently cover the cost of the enforcement of the conservation restrictions terms." That's from the Open Space Committee. So I think we've read into the record like, five letters. The one from the Town Administrator was regarding the Selectmen's meeting, that you guys didn't have enough time to review the plan, it was, you received it on the ninth and your, or, or twelfth, ninth, it was very close to the time.
Received it, it was the night of the meeting.
Yeah.
We didn't have change to approve it, but.
Would you have any comment on that, now that some time has passed, or?
It doesn't seem to be, you know, John was actually supposed to be here representing, John Pottler was supposed to represent the board, and basically, we did not have any further comments at this time.
And is it something you'll be reviewing again, or is it, you're satisfied?
You know, I think it's already been reviewed before with the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Any comments that were addressed at that time, you know, I wasn't on the board at the time, but the rest of the board felt that it was okay.
Okay. So really, the only other two is, the fire department has requested some more time to review the plan, and Nick Laney, the engineer. The fire department, I'm sure, could probably review the plan within a week or so. I don't know that.
Well, we'll, we'll work with them, I mean, that's standard, and I'll, I'll sit with your public.
And so that's the other, that's the only other town roadblock as far as boards and committees, but we still need peer review from an engineer.
But could I, could I just respond to the Open Space, is that, I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, if I'm allowed to.
If you'd like.
Okay. So, through the DEP process, when we went there, ninety-nine percent of what they're asking for is in the DEP permit, already. There's no need for layering and layering, because DEP's already, DEP's in charge of those waters, that's who's in charge of it, not this Open Space people, DEP. So, DEP gave us a permit with conditions. Those conditions address, I mean, I'm not gonna say they address word for word.
Yeah.
They address.
I'm just, we don't wanna.
I just want you to know that for the public at large here, and I, I know this is on, at home, and people are concerned about, obviously, the beautiful property up there, and I credit the Toll family with keeping it pristine, to be candid with you, but the reality is, is DEP, one of the big things, there was more time spent on protecting the access to the water than there was anything else, you know, the, the, these are all, it's been laid in there, and that's why I mentioned prior when we were speaking this evening, that the DEP permit would probably be included in any decision that you would make, saying, you know, you have to follow the DEP, which addresses this Open Space permit, comment. It gives them just about everything they want without complicating it, because DEP really is the policeman on that whole thing, and we're not planning on doing anything within the hundred feet, other than the very minor things that we spoke about, so never mind the fifty feet, I mean, we're pretty much out of the whole thing, and we're, and I'd also like to mention for the record, so people know, that as, as you run a nursing home, the, the water quality and, and, you know, and the different, that type of the waste stream is much different than what we're talking about. We're talking about household, you know, flushing traditional toilets, and we're talking about a system today, in a project today, that is producing, if it was running as still as a nursing home, which it could still do, because it hasn't been two years that it's been closed, it could be reopened. It's not the business I'm in, but it could be done. Is twelve thousand five hundred gallons around, approximately, of more medical-style waste, and the treatment addresses that, but my point is, for water quality, this project's only got much better for the water, and DEP realized that, and also being reduced, the footprint, all the runoffs being captured, I mean, there's no comparison to the impact of the, of the, of the development that's in front of you tonight versus what's there today and what was already approved. This is getting much better through the efforts of a lot of people, Conservation, DEP, Selectmen, and everybody else. So, I just want everybody at home and here to know that, that this development is by far superior to what's there today.
I have a question. In, in your progression of the site, what's your, what's your timeframe, what's your phasing for the site?
So, Michael, there's only two foundations. Once the property is demolished, there are two, there are two buildings, perhaps I could stand up and show you the, the plan, but.
That's okay.
Would you like me to do that?
You don't have to.
Okay. So, there are two, so what you have up there today.
Yes.
And you all know what's there today.
Yes.
Several little buildings, houses and so on, and they were built, you know, it was a different era, let's face it. And then the mansion that was originally Mr. Eaton's was expanded, expanded like, two or three different times, you know, over the decades, from the mid-fifties up to, you know, I think the eighties or something. So, what's ultimately gonna be there is two new foundations with underground parking and twenty percent site coverage, so the, the, the progression is to get both those foundations in and have two framing crews, two major framing crews, or wreck them both at the same time. That's, that's, I'm building the whole thing one-hundred percent, it's not gonna be where we're just picking away. I can handle what needs to be done all at one time, and that's what I'd like to do, get the impacts done with, that way, there's the least amount of effect on any neighbors, which there aren't really any, but I'm talking about the wildlife and everything else, just finish it. That's, that's what I'd, I like to be landscaping, you know, in the summer, and, and wrap it up, that's my goal.
Okay. So, you're gonna be building two foundations at once?
Yes, sir.
When are you gonna do the drainage?
Well, the drainage and the site work, I would, I would get the foundations in. Well, the drainage and the site work, I would, I would get the foundations in and get the buildings framed.
Yep.
And then, uh, and get them backfilled. And then, obviously, I have erosion controls and everything else.
Yes.
You know, so, and then immediately, uh, immediately, uh, when, I'd say March-ish, right in there, we would have, uh, it's most likely that Loops is also going to do the site work.
Yes.
Okay. Um, ours doing the, some of the utility work and Loops will probably be doing the, the old.
Cause ours knows the utilities, uh, yeah.
And I don't want to reinvent it. He's already got that. The Toll spent five and a half million dollars doing the undergrounds up there.
That's a good move.
We, I think it makes everybody more comfortable to use. That's why our friend Kevin Klein's sitting here next to me, although he's a, I'd really like him as if, I'd use him on any other project as well. But, um, it's our first experience with Stan Tech and, and, uh, so I, I don't want to, I want to make sure the town knows that what's being done up there has been, most of what's being done, other than the fact that there are two new buildings going there and a new, a new type of use, let's say.
Right.
Basically, everything's already been vetted, you know, over, because it's all being reused.
Right. What I'm leading to, okay, because I know I'm in the business, is if, if, if we're going to go with demo, then we're going to go with foundations.
And framing.
And then we're, yeah, and then we're, we're going to go with, um, drainage. And then we're going to go with connecting the, the sewage and everything else. I think there's time in there to have our engineer, um, review your drainage, what you have going on there while you're doing your work.
If you gave me the permit.
No, no. What I'm saying is I think we can make this work in our timeframe.
So what I'm saying to you is if I could have the ability.
Don't you think?
Even if it's, okay, let's, let's look at your model at the conservation to some degree, you know, but different, okay? We have the demo out there and then the demo's not going to take long.
No.
It's going to go quick. Those houses are one day apart and the big buildings, five days, five to eight days. Um, so it's, I mean, this is going to be, we don't, we make it all disappear. And, um, and it goes right, just so you know, I don't want to get into too much detail, but then bore everybody, but the way we do it is we take it down and we put it right into a live bottom trailer, a hundred yards at a time, and it just disappears that day. There's nothing stacked, you know, there's, there's nothing blowing around.
Loops is taking a live load.
Right, the live load, live bottom trailers.
Yep.
That's what we use and, uh, walking floor trailers and, and that's what we use and we bring it down to Taunton and it's distributed there. It's actually put into rail cars.
You're going to a lead thing?
It, well, no, what it does is in Massachusetts on demo.
I know.
Requires, and I know, you know, when you're in the business, but for those, it requires everything being separated and culled and, and they do some of that initially, you know, but it's culled there and then the stuff that just can't, has no repurposing.
Right.
Is crushed up and put into a rail car and brought actually to old strip mines in eastern Kentucky, uh, western Kentucky, uh, eastern Kentucky, Ohio, upstate New York. These are the places that, that's how they reclaim the strip mines. They line them and fill them. And that's, that, all of Massachusetts' waste, very shortly, is all going to be leaving by rail.
Yeah.
Uh, because there's no more landfills, you know, it's, 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 so not to get off track.
But Nick Laney's only reviewing the drainage?
Yeah, pretty much. Unless he's, I mean, he, he doesn't do the septic with us. He'll do the drainage with us. So by the time they get to doing anything as far as drainage goes, he will have to review it.
Well, my concern is, I guess, if we try to act on something, and we haven't heard from everybody tonight yet, but if we just said, just hypothetically, approve this pending, and then Mike O'Brien comes back and he says, this swing isn't big enough, we're going to move something.
Oh, he can change the, they can change the pocket lots, they can change the roads.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be, then it changes the building.
No, we can't change the building.
We can't change the buildings. It just, I'll tell you right now, that the building footprints.
Yes, you can.
The, the, no, no, we can't.
You already did this week. You already did twice this week.
Well, no, but as far as the structural goes.
It really can't. And I'm just being devil's advocate here. If we try to prove something, all these pending this guy and pending that guy's approval, I hate to see it come back and then it be detrimental to you.
Do you want to?
What I could do, what I could do is.
No, let me ask. Have you made sure that the, um, the turning radius for the fire engines is adequate for?
The plates, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same turning radius that we actually had out there that we had to get approved the last time uh, for the access road, uh, for the, uh, around the access for the building.
Yes, and they haven't changed the size of the ladder truck or anything?
I don't believe they have.
I don't, okay, there you go. So I think we should be fine. If they have to add a little bit of asphalt on one side of the road or the other, I think they'll be able to do it.
What we could do, Mr. Cox, I think might make sense. We could sit down, you, you meet on the ninth, right?
Who?
Your board, or is it?
Yeah, yeah, we're on January ninth is our next scheduled meeting.
So I could take the time from now and, and meet with the fire chief and make sure we're all set so there's no crisis there, because I'm going to be in the demo stage between now and then anyway. And then if I could, if, if we could find a way on the ninth for you guys to bless it enough so I could get the, fleece the foundations in and allow me to frame, I have no problem waiting for Mr. Laney to weigh in and modify whatever drainage or weigh in on any of that, modify that. Assuming, I'm just throwing a roadmap out there that I, that, that could work.
Do you have a comment?
I will. I, I will when you're, when you're ready.
Could I, could I?
Well, let, let him comment.
Because I want to address his last comments from the meeting I came to before, if I may.
Oh, okay.
Because, because you did bring up.
Oh, yeah, and I, I would just, you know, when you were saying, when, when you were starting to phase him, phase this thing out, that's the first thing we would, what's the first thing that goes in? Uh, the first thing that goes in is drainage for the basement.
Foundation.
No, first, the, the foundation, in that foundation is parking and we have to put in the underslab parking, uh, drainage for the parking lot.
Well, actually.
That's actually the first piece that goes in.
But actually, just so we understand, well, that is true and kind of untrue. The, the reality is, is the underground parking is in a tight tank, so there's nothing to really talk about.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So there's no discharge anywhere.
Okay.
Uh, it has to be in a tight tank because we don't have public storage.
You have some trench drains at the entrances to keep the water.
Trenches at the entrance, but.
And you're going to pump them out? You're going to pump them out?
Well, you, well, yes, we're not going to allow people to wash their cars and things inside there, no. Uh, but, you know, so you have a car, you're driving along in the rain, let's say. And you come in there and your car, you know, drips off. That water finds its way into that tight tank and that's part of the association's responsibility is to make sure. That way, any oils or any freeze or anything else, nothing enters the water, the, the recharge area, period. Oil and water.
Got a separator.
Correct. Well, that actually, no, it's actually a tight, it's not. We could do the separator if we had public storage.
It's a tank of oil and water.
Because we have.
Double, double-walled concrete tank.
And they have to have it pumped out.
High love, high water level monitors and.
Two pumps.
What was that?
No, no, it gets pumped out by a company if it gets filled.
Close by gravity from the forgeries that they have, that will be in the parking garage.
Yep.
Each building will have its own tight tank. It's a fifteen-hundred gallon tank inside of a two-thousand gallon tank.
Yep.
If that fills up, the alarm goes off. You guys call Clean Harbors or somebody to come up that tank up.
Yeah. And actually, one of the tanks that we're using is an existing tank that was put in three weeks ago for the beauty salon. So I'm going to take that one, move it over, use it for one of the buildings and then buy another one and put it into the second building.
All right. I hope you don't mind how I phrase that because I just want you to understand that, that the drainage under this building, as far as the parking, is going to be in a tight tank. So there's nothing, there's, I mean, it's, there's really nothing to review because that's what's required.
It's just during construction, before you get the roof on, if water got in there, you might have to pump that water out.
That's right, but that would be clear. There's not going to be vehicles in there. There's not going to be any.
It's not contaminated at that point.
I mean, every job that's built has a bulldozer on it or an excavator and obviously, you know, I mean, you see the level of contractors I'm using. We're not going up there with, everybody's got new, modern equipment and, and maintained. Doesn't mean you can't blow a hydraulic hose. It happens. Um, and then you have to manage it.
Yep.
But, uh, Mr. Chairman, to go back to your point, and I appreciate this board's willing to.
Depth.
Depth and to listen to what I'm trying to do here. Um, that these two buildings are what we're talking about. I have no problem waiting for all the other site work, other than the two cellar holes and the foundations in. I could hold off on everything until Mr. Laney and I come back again in front of this board and be vetted out, anything like that, because that's not going to change. That keeps me moving and gets the, the development moving. That would be very helpful to me. And that gives the board the ability to add in, I, I'm okay with that. I trust the board. They, they wouldn't misguide me. I, I candidly, I found everybody that I've worked with in the town, from the building inspector, the town manager, the town council and everybody else in between to be very reasonable and fair. I don't think anybody has a hidden agenda about anything and I, I, I trust the boards. And so I'm willing to, you know, put myself out there, expose myself for that, but.
Well, I think we're all in the business, so we all.
And I didn't realize that when I walked in here. I had no idea who's in what business. I mean, Mr. Cox did tell me.
We're all in the business and we all have, you know, a good idea what you're doing.
So if I could, can I just walk through just a little bit?
Yeah, I'd like you to present everything tonight if you feel comfortable with.
Yes. So I'm, what I'm going to do, so with me, so tonight, obviously, I'm John Deli Prescoli. I'm the person that's been in front of you before. I'm the owner of Island Terrace by agreement, which means I have it under contract with the bank. I already have the funds to purchase it in escrow with the bank. I'm not borrowing money to buy it. So just so you know, that's the, this, this is not on a shoestring. It's, it's solid. Um, there is a few timing issues and a couple of title things we're clearing up, but that's it. They're very minor. And I suspect next week, the property will actually be in our name. I mean, title and everything. Um, with me tonight, obviously, we all know Kevin Klein. He's been here, how many years now, Kevin? Back and forth, uh, a decade or so at the Stan Tech. And Jeremy Baldwin, who's with Mogul Architects. And Mogul has done some fabulous buildings for us and others up in Marlboro and, uh, life science buildings and other things and just a top-notch architectural firm. How many architects were there, about thirty?
Yeah.
About thirty, all right, so it's a nice, solid firm. And, um, you know, once again, I really, and when I sat with them, and this is for everybody at home as well, I wanted to make sure that the buildings that were built up here fit that spot both aesthetically and visually and, and really look like they belong there. And, and that was the, what I want to do. And I'm going to show you, share that elevation with you in a moment. Um, so as I said to you, we have two buildings and very similar parking arrangement. That's what's there now. Each building has underground parking. One has thirty-nine spaces, one has thirty-eight. Each building is one hundred percent handicapped accessible. So every unit in the building has, is accessible because there's elevators in both buildings. And I'm going to let Kevin get into any details, but I'd like to, I'll give you the cursor. If you want more detail, then we'll go to the, the professionals here. Let me just see. And as you can see, all the different little buildings that are all being consolidated to those two buildings I just showed you, this is the demolition plan. So that's what's actually happening. And what the buildings actually look like is right here. With shingles, some clapboard and all different types of details. I put a lot of architecture in this. So it would really fit. I wanted to make it look like, um, you know, like the, like Sebago Lake, like the lakeside you see in Maine and that, that flavor. Kind of a shingle-style turn of the century, which by the way, the house up there was built in, what, nineteen twelve? So I was trying to keep in that concept of what maybe that house might have looked like, you know, when it was first built. But, you know, that was what the thought was.
Pretty much like that.
Sixty-six two-bedroom units.
That's correct. Sixty-six units at thirty-three per building. The only difference between, there are slight differences between the buildings because of nuances. One has thirty-nine spaces, one has thirty-eight underneath, and the rest is surface parking outside. Um, and they're all two-bedrooms. And they're all about fourteen hundred square feet. Is that all right? So that's, those, so there, some vary a little bit. And there is some common spaces. So in a nutshell, that's really what it is. And this is fifty-five and older too. I'm sure you know that. That's, that's the requirement, which means for those who may not be familiar with that, it means one spouse has to be fifty-five or older. And there's no permanent children there. They can visit if they want them to. Um, but they, but.
This is for sure, Tom.
It's, right. Um, so what I see, what I see the demographic here is, obviously, we all know that's a wonderful spot up there. The gentleman at DEP said to me, he said, uh, I've been doing this for thirty-five years. He says, that's one of the nicest inland sites, if not the nicest. And he says, you know, I really like what you're doing and you're really repurposing it thoughtfully. Yeah, but that's, so I really feel that when people come to that site, they look at it, they're twelve minutes from the commuter rail station. They still probably have, you know, consulting in Boston or have some professional job or they're driving to Providence or they're driving, you know, this is a great, great location. They, they look like they're five hours away in Maine somewhere and they're, they're actually fifty minutes south of Boston or fifty minutes from Providence approximately. And with a commuter rail, I mean, it's just perfect. And it really gives a beautiful product of something, nothing, this type of product doesn't exist, to my knowledge, I've researched, it doesn't exist here right now. It would give you another, um, style of, of product. And when you look at what they're trying to do in the state is have different types of housing, all different, like, housing. So you don't, all have just single-family subdivisions. You have a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
Tears.
All different tiers, and this would fit well with that. Obviously, it's upscale. And so our buyers, you know, obviously, I'd love to see preference to the local people, but I also see a lot of professional people who would love to live here. And a lot of people are selling their houses and just, and live in Florida part of the year and are still active professionals. I mean, I work eighty hours, telling, at the meeting the other night, I work eighty hours a week and I'm sixty-three. So, you know, it's, 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 and a lot of people are working much later and, and I think that's who you're going to see here, but they're empty nesters. So with that, I'm, I'm entertaining any questions for the professionals. I just don't want to, you know, drag it out more than I have to. But I, I just, you know, to bore you with all the, but I'm happy to go through any details. The other thing I do want to mention though, in respect, how do I pronounce your last name?
Zake.
Zake, okay.
Zake.
Okay, so that's the acronym for the name, okay. So you had questioned me on the, on the driveways.
Yeah.
And I'd like to go to that. And, um, Kevin, is, where's the plan that shows the street?
Sheen, eight or nine.
So Island, um, Long Point Road.
Yes.
The public road.
Yes.
That currently runs from Route one oh five down across that.
To Marion Road.
To Marion Road, you know, that cuts across the water. Is anywhere between twenty and twenty-one feet. That's your road, municipal road. And the road in here is exactly that, twenty to twenty-one feet. So we're not going from a thirty-foot wide, you know, industrial-style road, the public way, down to some, it's really similar. It's almost identical to what your public way is.
Right. That, yes.
I just want you to be aware that we didn't have that information.
That wasn't the point I was trying to make. It was a general safety one. Uh, I believe that when they used this facility before, all the people drove in, took the left turn, went down a perfectly wide street, took a right turn.
You're saying, you mean off of, off of.
They, they, they came this way and they turned down here and they went up the hill and they did their business. And if, if that's all that happens, that's, that's what we want, that's what we want, or that's what I would want. Uh, this right now, you can drive onto this, you can drive onto this. You can drive onto this and go around this. We don't want, don't do that.
No, but these are bar roads.
You don't have, but you have to keep the people off of them.
Right, well, I think when.
No, but that's part of the, that's part of the safety thing. We, we, we don't want people.
We'll put signage, we'll put signage up there, but I don't see anybody, I mean, we're going to have an entrance there. Right now, right now, you have two pillars there. Now, they're dated, okay? What I would like to see is something much more attractive there, you know, for proper entrance way. That is where the people are going to go. The other thing is Kevin has proposed some limited lighting and so forth. So it's going to be very definitive which way people are coming in. And we've also placed a couple of samplings of guardrail where we think there's tight areas.
And, and you're going to have people. And I want some bright white and bright orange.
Now, other people might, you, 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 you want to make them blend in with the woods? No, I want them to.
Well, you've got to remember the aesthetics is, is.
Well, we, it was funny seeing the car in the.
Well, I'd rather see it look like a white rail fence than an airport.
Well, I do, we're going to do a wood guardrail as our plan. But even when I'm required to do metal guardrail, I only use core ten, okay? Because it, you know, it kind of blends with, with, with nature. I, the thought of a galvanized guardrail out here is just going to send an industrial message when we're trying to leave it as natural as possible. I mean, we've cut way down on the amount of people that are going to be coming in compared to what Carol had and, you know, and, and so it's. But could I? Actually, we did the analysis and it's less, but.
To, to back away from the aesthetics a little bit, um, can. can we determine whether we're gonna have a deeded right away?
Well, we have.
There, Kevin Klein from Stantec.
Yes.
What they have right now is a deeded accessway that's twenty feet wide.
Awesome. And it goes from?
And it goes from Long Point Road all the way up to here.
Okay, and we'll maintain that.
That is maintained. That goes for the property.
Hi, that's all I need to know.
We're maintaining that.
What is this one?
This?
No, 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 we wanted to point to this.
There is another access, he's been.
Who's that in favor of? I was just wondering.
That's to the bars.
Is it Harvard?
Yes. That is because of that he's next. Yeah.
Okay, because there are other people that watch there. There are people that, the town, along with the City of New Bedford and the City of Ton, they actually hire people to patrol, to make sure that things are.
Well, they should.
So it's not just DEP. No, it's not just DEP.
Yeah, and.
And so this is, this is in the Fag, and where does it go?
This goes all the way back up to Fag's neck.
Okay. Okay, because what'll, what'll happen, you're gonna have, what, ninety-five spots here and?
Hundred and thirty-two total.
Thirty-nine, thirty-eight.
And fifty-five surface.
Fifty-five surface.
Huh, why do you not have a hundred and seven, a hundred and thirty? No, you have a hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two spaces, two spaces per unit.
Okay.
Which, by the way, is very unlikely, they do it now. For, just for background, in nineteen ninety-two, I built the very first fifty-five and older in the city of Marlboro, actually Metro West. And, and I built over twelve hundred units since then. And I will tell you that, that they're never using two spaces over every unit. So the cumulative thing is about one and a half is the actual density in reality.
Do you have, it's good that you have two parking spaces for each unit. I assume that they're all like a standard, a nine or eleven-foot by twenty-something-foot parking space.
Yes.
What about for, I have to imagine you're gonna have some service vehicles out there and, from time to time. Is there accommodation for anything like that within that parking area?
Like deliveries? I mean, like an Amazon truck.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Right, so they would come up and they would park, you know, live, and they would unload the goods and leave. Like a U.S. truck doesn't.
Don't they?
On a town road.
Don't they have to deliver them? I mean, they're gonna be there for a while.
Right, there is, you know, there are some areas there, like in here and in between, you know, we could have that, you know. We have to be very careful in the pavement. But the reality is.
Are you really close on your permeable? You really can't add, you have to take somewhere.
We can't add that.
Yeah, we can't add any.
That's how.
Current, current site is about twenty-two percent impervious.
More closer to twenty-three.
Might be closer to twenty-three. Mass DEP required us to limit it to twenty percent. And we have been going back and forth. Jeremy's been nice enough to keep changing the building on me.
At no charge, I heard.
Yes.
Didn't I tell you? Did they change the buildings?
Oh, he did. But he made it smaller. And, but making it smaller got less underground parking, which needed more surface parking. So we are within a hundred square feet of our twenty percent. And it's really close. And it's just, every time, when we're tweaking, we're playing around, so that's kinda where we're at. What we did do is the access road, which is twenty, the twenty feet, when we get up to here, we increased to twenty-four feet, just so we have some width by our site. So that make it a little easier when you're up here doing the turning and everything else.
Looks wider.
It is.
Which is probably better for you with the fire department.
It is. It will be, yes.
Yeah.
And that's what we were looking at and trying to figure out ways to do this. Because it, it is, in order to get sixty-six units down here, it's tight on that twenty percent. We do have a little turnoff here, although that's primarily for the operator for the treatment plant or any, any pumping that they have to do. The, just to go back, and I know you guys knew this, but it's public water supply, so they have a licensed operator for the water supply. And it's a moving bed bioreactor wastewater treatment system. So they have an operator for that. Happens to be the same guy. They're not there all the time, but they come over periodically. So it, they do actually have licensed operators for that. Other site personnel, John, will be, the condominium association will be hiring people to do lawn maintenance and stuff, plowing, but there isn't a full-time maintenance truck or maintenance personnel out there. Stormwater, I understand Nick will, Nick Rainey will be reviewing this. I do have one minor modification to the set of plans that we gave you, and I'll make sure that Nick has it. As we were rushing and doing things, we had a great idea of changing the drainage right at the entrance, and we put in bigger chambers and did it, and neglected to change an invert, so we had water flowing uphill two and a half feet.
That never works.
Regarding that, like you, I see you have, it looks like a little swale with a infiltration system right under the bottom of the entrance. You're so close on your lot coverage for the non-permeable. I have to assume you need a curb berm. Or cape card berm or something on at least one side of that.
It's a berm.
And is that gonna affect your?
It, it's included in it.
Driving, you know, it's kinda.
It's the twenty feet plus that half a foot for that. We added, we added that out there.
It's covered in the site coverage.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Just put, not to go back through the whole history of things again, but just some of the things. When I, I have been working on this site for fifteen years now, sixteen. When it first came on, on board, they had failing cesspools.
Yeah.
Two public water supply wells with cesspools within a hundred feet of some of the wells. Stormwater was either runoff or leaching catch basins. When the Toll family was doing the upgrades to Island Terrace, they put in the MBVR treatment system with leaching. The leaching was moved outside of the zone one. The treatment system is down here and will be retained, and then most of the leaching will be retained, all outside of the zone one. Stormwater was upgraded at, at that point, so that's the parking that was up here, was then captured in catch basins, deep-sump catch basins, and then infiltrated using Coltech's underground chambers. All the access road continued to flow off say. With this development, John says we're reusing a lot of it. We are, but we're gonna reuse some of the Coltech chambers. We're rebuilding the leaching, the stormwater system.
Yeah.
We're now gonna have, for everything except for that last little ten feet, all of the pavement will go through deep-sump catch basins, through a hydrodynamic separator, and then leaching, underground stormwater, leaching. All of the roof runoff is also going to subsurface leaching.
That's what it is today.
Behind the buildings, and that's part of what we had to go to conservation for, is that two of our roof drains are in the hundred foot. We have another one that's down here that's an existing. Right now, it's an existing for the parking lot. We're gonna repurpose that, add a little bit to it, and that's within the fifty-foot, right at the fifty-foot buffer zone. It was for parking. It's now gonna be for the roof. So that was one, some of the things with DEP is that we had to minimize what was in the zone one. We had to maximize protection to the zone one. We had to capture all of our runoff from impervious surfaces and recharge it, including the roofs, a hundred percent for a hundred-year storm. And we gave calculations for it. Now that we're doing this, we're actually updating the stormwater report that we wrote three years ago. We're updating it for this, and I'll have that for Nick before he's at, before, next week, actually. We'll have you full stormwater report and send just the calculations. And Tom Tom is gonna want this part of the notice.
I think the, the, really, what, I think what the flavor of this is, as you can see, is we're getting much more environmentally sensitive. Much more work is being done, and we're limiting our impacts. That's the benefit of this development. It just gets better. On an environmental, if you look just through the environmental lens, that's what you're seeing there.
I know what you're saying. That's a lot of work.
It's a ton of work.
Yes.
There's a lot of site work in this little.
Yes, I think Nick should be very happy. And, and I, you know, just, I think they've done.
I think it's a good job.
I think, very much.
Do you have any other concerns, Inc?
There was a, I just wanted to tell them, well, I, I wanted, I wanted to talk to the, just in general, to the folks about the open space comments, but the, there are, there are other people that use, that use the place. If you go back, leave that page open.
You mean our property?
No, no, but just off your property. For instance, just good enough, just very often, you'll find horse trailers here.
Oh, yeah.
People are unloading. Yeah, so there's a lot of.
Can they ride down through the?
There's, there's plenty of activity around here, but most of them are probably more familiar with the site than the new people that you bring down here. And, and, you know, and I just really worry about them, you know, driving into the, you know.
Yeah, but.
Kind of driving off the road.
And, and I guess that's sort of a good point, but unsaid too is, you know, we, we want the people that have been using it to be comfortable still using, not, obviously not your property, but to be able to use the Beddysneck property that the town did, and if somebody typically does unload their trailer, I don't want it to drive up your driveway and unload horses up at the top of the hill, but that your residents are cognizant of that too.
To me, that's the charm of the place, is the horses and the walking and the people, you know, strolling up to that beautiful barn that's up in there. You know, I mean, there's, there's, people love to walk around. People jog around Cranberry Bar.
I have property in Carver. The people are jogging all the time, walking their dogs. I mean, it's, in that case, it's actually on our property. I, I mean, I don't say anything. I mean, you know, just, you know, it's, I think it's nice. They actually keep an eye on the property.
And it is, it's a water supply protection area, both for the surface water and for the on-site well. And DEP was adamant about the fact that we can't have access to the water from our site. And that's.
That's in the permit.
That's in the, it's in their water supply permit. And we had always had a public water supply well and a public water supply permit. When we changed the use, Mass DEP required us to go back and get a new permit with new permit standards and just new review process. And, which we did, and it put all those things like, you gotta keep everything out of the zone one, do everything you can.
Well, Kevin, it basically addressed everything on there on the open space letter.
On the open space, oh.
You go ahead.
On the open space letter, what, what they asked for, we, we read it, and everyone pays attention to them and stuff like that, but the, but we can't, that's basically seizing the, it's a taking. We can't do it at this stage of the job. There isn't any way that we could probably do it at any stage.
What's that?
We can't place a conservation restriction on anything. That, that isn't, that's not possible.
And we can't require somebody to do that.
No, no, but that's.
A DEP de facto already has.
Yeah.
They're saying you can't use the water. They want you not to use the first fifteen feet.
Not like that. They want you to pay a month.
Yeah, we can't, this is something.
But I think with the development you're doing, you're not treeing right down to the water. You're not creating access. You're gonna keep the people up on the top of the hill anyway. And, like, I think we had discussed the conservation, some of those steep slopes, we talked about putting a split rail fence to keep them from going down that. So I think that's all great. I just, I would like everybody to vet the process tonight, 'cause I'm inclined to make a motion to continue, but also I see people here from the public that would maybe ask for comment before we do that.
And I have one more little comment.
So do I have a question too.
The, when, when this project started, they don't all start at the zoning board of appeals. There are other ways of, of starting these projects, and, but it's, this one did. At that point, these folks got permission to, to do this project. That was, that was the yes/no chance. When, when we do site plan review, and this is for anywhere in Massachusetts, we have to approve. Eventually. Now, we're allowed to have conditions and conditions and conditions, and we can, and we can go back and forth and talk to the thing, but we don't have a choice. This is not like they're, that we're ever gonna turn them down. We can't turn them down.
For what, everybody?
So, just so.
For what?
For site plan review.
For anyone?
For anyone.
Anyone that's gone through the ZVA already.
Yes, they, they've already gone, the ZVA, in, in this particular case, this, this one, the yes/no decision has already been made. What we're doing now is, what we can do as a planning board is we can condition that, but that's, that's as far as we can ever go with it.
That's essential.
And I'm talking to the camera now. I, I'm not.
Conservation is doing the same.
Yeah, I'm not telling you guys what, anything. I'm just talking to the camera.
Well, that's why we started with ZVA, because without that, there's really no project. But see, the zoning board of appeals can say, "Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead." But we have to deal with, like, the fire department.
Yeah, I think what Nick's saying, sort of backwards for some of that normal process we see, that's all. But we're, I think, in this one, we're getting to the same spot. It's just.
It was different when we got there.
Yeah, and one thing that, we didn't ask for a reduction in parking, because we didn't want to. We wanted to go right with what you had for two spaces. If fire department came back and said, you know, "We really need something different," we might have to consider losing four spaces or doing something to shrink if they needed more access. I don't think they're going to.
Hopefully, they'll, they'll make it work, because, I mean, there's, there's a standard ladder truck that you guys run.
Yeah.
And if you run it around your parking lot, I think it, it'll work fine.
The real nice thing here, Mr. Chairman, is that these buildings, I know I mentioned it, but are fully sprinkled, which gives the, the fire department the time necessary to get up there if there was an issue.
Right, but the, but the main thing with that.
Where's, where's the wire connector?
Yeah, right, where, where the fire department connection is.
Yeah.
And does, is there, is the ladder truck able to go around the parking lot and go out?
Well, is there gonna be a hydrant, actually, 'cause they're combustible buildings?
Yeah, well, what they have is, is you have, you have the water and, and you have the, we have a forty, it was a forty thousand gallons sitting there.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand sitting there waiting.
Yeah.
It's all under pressure.
Right, but you're gonna have a hydrant for them to hook on to, not.
Yeah, because it's not great out there.
I have a brick building, and I can have the hose hook up on the building, but if that building's on fire, they can't run over and hook on to a wood building, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, the thing, the thing is, that, that connection they have.
Yeah.
Is they bring a pumper up to that, they hook up to that, and they pressurize the building.
Yeah.
In the event the sprinkler, multiple heads of pump.
Right.
With one head, the sprinklers, a lot of people don't know this, but, you know, they only go one at a time, you know, just to all to stop raining. You know, in the movies, you know, it's.
Right, the heat, heat sets them off with that little element. Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
What's the supposed heat of all the units? Is this place entirely electric?
No, it's all propane.
Okay, so where are the propane tanks gonna be?
They're buried.
And how big are they? And where are they gonna be buried? And how are they gonna get filled?
Right, well, they'd be filled with, with a propane delivery.
Well, I get that.
And, and what, what we do is we have, we have centralized propane tanks, and then it's distributed to each unit with gas meters. So what happens is, it's almost like a natural gas situation from the, from the owner's perspective, because each one has a separate meter, but the centralized delivery, and then the propane company delivers, reads the meters, and then bills each individual. They're building a vault, and that's how they do it.
Several, three or four tanks.
What about?
Yeah, I, I would probably see it as.
Well, could I know where they are on the plane?
You can.
That they're not on there.
They're not on the plane yet.
Is the fire department aware of where they're gonna be?
We will work with the fire department and make sure they're aware.
How big of a tank are they?
That's, yes, typically the thousands.
Several thousands.
Yes.
Could you, could you get that done, so if we continued for the January ninth meeting? Because we are waiting pending fire department, anyone?
My goal was to, I hadn't seen that letter, so I.
We just get them all for tonight's meeting, so it's.
So I will address those.
Question number two. I really see, I know, I know what you're saying, and I, I feel for you as far as impervious, but I really see this being really jammed with cars. And these are sixty-six well-to-do people. FedEx is gonna be there every single day, UPS every single day, plus a mail truck stopping for a half an hour, an hour. What about some impervious pavers or some other place where they can, you can't do impervious pavers?
I'm allowed to.
But the reality is.
Impervious pavers for the walkways, yes.
But not for a vehicle?
I'm not allowed to.
Really?
Because of the water supply.
Let me just.
I would have loved it.
Okay, so, you're only gonna see one and a half cars. I'll be honest with you, I know it doesn't look it if you commute into Boston, but people. know it doesn't look it if you commute into Boston, but people today, there's less cars, a lot of people are, are taking public transit and everything else, and the thing is here, is that each person has an exclusive space that's under the building, that's their personal space, everything else is left open, these aren't marked, these are available, so that's, you know, so it's, that could be used for whatever purpose you want it to be.
What happens with the extra six or five spaces in each building? If you said there's one per unit, there's 33 units in a building, so there's a couple of extra ones down, a handicap is what those ones are?
Just a couple of handicaps down there, and then could just be an extra space down there, first come, first served, or.
But each one will have a dedicated space, then you have open handicaps.
Yep.
And then a couple extras, and then up there, it's gonna be all open. But the reality is, I, I'm telling you, and this is a question that comes up in every planning board meeting, nobody believes that there's only one and a half spaces, but I'm telling you, that's what it is. When you add, I know, you can't have half of a car, but the reality is, some people have one, there's gonna be some single people here.
Yeah.
That only have one car, they can't drive two cars at once, so they, they'll have.
But they don't have to drive them.
Right, well.
Yeah, they park.
Typically, well, I, I don't think, this type, people are downsizing their lives, you know, if they want five, six cars and, you know, a Ferrari in the garage, I mean, this is not where they're gonna.
Or they're gonna have offsite storage.
Right.
Have you given thoughts as to where you'll stash the snow when it's plowed?
Outside of the buffers.
Which is?
And we have all this, we have, we have these areas here.
Back in here.
Outside of any, it's all free and clear.
Right.
It's outside of any thing with a conservation or anybody else around there.
And there won't be any use of salt or sand, you can't use salt out here, this is water, water supply protection.
But we can use sand.
You can use sand.
Which we will. But that's, that's like, it's a lot of sun, so you're gonna, if, with the blacktops there, you're gonna get a lot of that.
It's facing the south.
Right, you're gonna get a lot of that heating of that, and it becomes like a furnace, melting off the, the ice, if we keep it plowed well.
Nope.
But just, I, I have a little bit of faith in the fact that the density of the parking, because I'm telling you, that's really what happens, you drive up to the developments of Denham Mall where it doesn't even look like anybody lives there, nobody's even in the guest parking or anything else, and the, and the parking that would be similar to this, there's no, there's nobody there, you don't even think anybody lives there.
When will you have a lighting plan?
We do have a.
Right now.
You have it already?
Yeah.
Do we have it?
You can have it.
Oh, I, do we?
Hold on to that side, I guess.
Come over.
Thank you.
Can I have a copy of that picture?
Yeah.
I have further calculations if you need it as well.
Did you give them the elevators?
I haven't.
No. Would you like an elevation just?
Okay. Thank you.
Does the building itself, is it lit exterior-wise, like, downlights, uplights in the soffits? Is it just a?
Just over the doors.
Just at the doors?
Sorry, Jeremy Baldwin, Magal Architects, right now, it would just be the entryways that we have, and typical emergency Ugress lighting.
Yep.
And the reason for that is, I asked for that, because I want as much black sky as possible for the, for the views. It's very special up there tonight, and I wanna, I really wanna keep it, I wanna keep the impacts, I know you folks are gonna get calls when America's demoing and everything else, I know that, I feel, I know that, and I, I want you to be able to say, look, what you're gonna end up with is vastly superior to what's there now, and, because it is very visible up there, it's not gonna pitch as well.
I know. So, from what I'm hearing from the gentleman on the board, I've heard several times that we're talking about continuation till night.
I think just to get the fire department approval, can I just go to the lighting plan for one quick sec? I don't see any notes on here, at a quick glance, just, we just got it, night, sky compliant.
Jimmy has the whole report.
It's just that, that's one of our bylaws, is that outside lighting be night, sky compliant, so that it all faces downward.
But I'm really, I just want you to know, Mr. Knox, I'm very sensitive to that, up there, beyond the normal.
Yeah.
Because of the spot, I think that's what they're selling up there.
Basically, we're on down lighting, cutoffs.
Mr. Chairman, we, we started discussing like this incremental, and I was hoping that could be part of the motion, the incremental.
If not, we will.
The concept that we spoke of, I mean, I've, you know.
Yeah, I personally don't have a problem with it.
Be able to do the, at least limit it, the foundations.
No, but it's.
And then, you can't move on the site work until Nick Laney has signed off.
It's really.
For another meeting.
Which will be, yeah.
But that will time out perfectly.
It will.
I have no problem with that. I, I know Nick, Nick worked for Briggs Engineering.
Briggs?
Briggs way back.
We used to.
I built Bass River Marina in 1985, so, now, like, Briggs was the consulting engineer, that's when I first met Nick.
Who owned Briggs at that time?
You know, I don't know, Nick was the senior guy there, he was the senior guy, I don't remember.
You know, Kenny, right?
I, I don't know, the only one I remember was Nick, and then I, because I had so many permits, because we dredged Bass River, and it was so involved with Chapter 91 and everything else, it was just a nightmare, and.
How long ago?
1985.
Was Callahan down there with his boat?
He's, I don't know. No, it's, it's changed hands a couple of.
It looks, they're calling it dark sky conformant, so it looks like they are included, just wanna make sure all the fixtures are, I found it on one. Do you want to ask any public comment before I make that motion, or?
Does anyone?
Hey, how are you? Good to see you again, sir. Thank you.
Tom, do you have any comments, like to share with us?
Let her go first.
Carol?
I am, our family is very, very happy with the plan that John has come up with, I think that John, along with Kevin, who, Kevin's tried to get away from me for a decade, and has not succeeded at all.
You can't get away.
That, that the plan that is on the table right now will be a very, very beautiful reuse of the Island Terrace property, and I think that the people who will live there will enjoy, along with everyone else who uses the entire Beddy's Neck Peninsula, I think it will really be an asset to everything there, and our family is very happy to see what's being done.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
So what, I'm.
I think he had a comment. Tom?
Go ahead. Tom, did you?
The only question I have is, when you say, like, the buildings come within the 100 feet, the buffer zone, you call them, right?
They're not within the 100 feet.
No, they come to within, from the building ends here, and it's 100 feet to the water.
There is one corner that's very close to the 100-foot mark.
One corner where, it's right on the money, but you have a 100-foot buffer, right now, Carol's sister's house, right, or your brother's house, you know, it's actually in, it's 50 feet from the water.
I know, it's closer.
So it's, that's been removed and brought back, so what you're getting is less encroachment into the, into the protected area, so that's what I was, when I view, if you, I don't know how much you heard in my prior, but, but this is getting more environmentally sound, like redevelopment, than what it is today, not that what's there is unsound, it's just this is more sound and more environmentally sensitive.
So you're trying to keep it within 100 feet of the, what is it, the Class A zone?
Well, we're trying to keep it out of.
We're actually keeping 100-foot buffer from the wetland, wetland vegetation that surrounds the pond.
Okay.
So it's not even from the actual edge of pond, it's from the wetlands that are, that were delineated, actually, a couple of years ago, but delineated around it, that are up, slightly up from the pond itself.
It's actually more than 100 feet from the water, actual, you know, where the edge of the water would be.
Okay, and the roof runoff, again, you, you have, I don't know what you call it, my, I grew up, my expertise is in the medical field, I'm not a builder, so I don't know anything about this, but you're gonna dig a trench, and you're gonna have the runoff from the roof come within that 100 feet.
But it's gonna be discharged subsurfacing.
It goes into subsurface chambers, so it leeches down, what we have out there right now, it's about 25 feet to groundwater, so it'll come out, go into the chambers, leech down 25 feet through the sand before it hits the groundwater, and then flows with the groundwater that ultimately gets to the pond.
Okay, and just the only thing I asked at, just at the last meeting too, as far as cutting down a lot of the trees there, so your building is gonna be 100 feet from the water, is your plan to cut down a lot of trees?
There are some.
So some of these people are gonna have an obstructed view of the water?
Not really, they all have some views, and, and, and there is a little bit of tree cutting in one corner, but the trees, you know, the trees have to be maintained, and, you know, and the dead trees would be removed, but we're not gonna clearcut anything, we can't, it's within the, right, it's within the 100 foot.
Well, that doesn't mean you can't cut stuff within there, it's just part of the application would be to show that.
But they do draw die here and there, the lighting.
Yeah, you have the right to vista prune and do things like that, within that buffer zone.
Also, I wanna keep a healthy canopy.
We have to cut.
Maintain it.
Brian, can I ask? Could I ask a question of the architect, like, what's gonna be coming from the chimney or the bow chimney, or?
That is actually the elevator, so we're repurposing that as for the style that we're going for, it'll look like the chimney of the building.
So then, where are all the exhausts from all the heaters coming out, out of the flat roof in the roof?
Yeah, so there's a flat roof on, on the top, because we're going with, as you can see from the isometric view of the building.
Yeah.
We do have, we're, we're splitting them up, we're gonna have some units, units on the ground, and we're gonna have some units on the roof, and goes along with the runs up to some of the units.
Okay.
Rock gas exhaust.
So we, yeah, they'll, they'll be side vented through the units.
Okay, yep.
So they won't come up through the roof.
So what's coming out of the roof then? Nothing?
No, so those would be more the, the condensers that we were talking about for.
AC.
Yep.
So there will be condensers on the roof, is that right?
Yeah, small condensers, like, what they're, what you would see on, like, it's about three by three up there, each one of them, but like I said, it's not gonna be 33 of them.
Oh, you're splitting the place and putting half on the, on the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
And the gas is going outside.
That's one of the four. Building B 34 plan.
Yeah, that's what they say, that's a lot of exits.
Yes.
33, 33 exhausts.
You have common spaces up there?
Yeah, so.
Total of three for both buildings?
Correct, on the third floor, so we have a total of 33 units in each building, we have 12 and 12 on both the first and second floors, and then on the third floor is nine units, so we've been able to play around with a lot of the roof in order to bring down the scale of the building, as you can see, those, if you look at the elevation that, that large, that large gable, all of those are actually the common spaces, we were able to do that and break down the scale because we didn't need the bedrooms there, so, yeah, up on the third floor, there's three common areas that will have many spaces.
Then one of them will have, let's say, some exercise area, one will be an area where people could do a small gathering, or, you know, or have a, a meeting, a small meeting, with it, so not for the outside, but for the.
Yeah, the residents.
And what's the first floor deck, what's it made of?
Of the decking.
This field deck?
Oh, so that's gonna be a composite deck.
No.
It's, I'm sorry?
A structural deck, the first floor?
Correct, yeah, so it's built, it's, it's essentially podium construction, so you have your, your concrete basement for the garage, then you have a composite deck that separates that, that's a one-hour rated, rating between your garage level and the first floor, so that's your.
And then wood frame up there with the.
So that's the only steel, it's just, just in the basement, and then everything above there is all stick frame.
Crazy, huh? Yeah, so I was wondering if, are you gentlemen?
Are you satisfied with where we're at, think?
Do you think, what do you think about, what do you think about where we have zoning board approval to move forward, would you consider having them accept planning board approval to move forward with site drainage to be? Reviewed by our, by our consulting engineer shortly?
Yeah, what he did.
Because I really don't wanna bring in another engineer to review something and start from.
I don't think it'll save you any time.
No, I don't think it'll save any time.
I'm very comfortable with Nick Laney, I think he's a fair, even-handed person, and.
Yeah, too, and I've known him for 40 years, I mean, I don't have, it doesn't work for me, just so we're clear, but I, I, I mean, when you've been in business as long as I have, you know a lot of people, and I've pumped into it. He's been working for us for 20 years, anyway.
Yeah, but, but we would look silly if we didn't have an up-to-date, you know.
No, I know.
So we have to, we have to do it.
So I really want him to check out the drainage.
And it's the drainage and the wastewater, he has a.
I think wastewater he has to anyway.
He wrote it up neatly before, all he asked, we can just go by his last recommendations, but he has to check to make sure that, yes, it is 66, yes, it is, no, just, it won't be a big deal, but we need that piece of paper, which is.
Right, so I would entertain a motion to that effect, that we allow them to go forward with the demolition, foundation, and we will catch up with them.
Yeah, and first floor deck.
In the middle of January.
Well, do you wanna wait until the 10th or 9th? Because we still haven't heard back from the fire department.
No, I think we can, we can, I think we can go forward with the demolition and the foundation, because if they need to do some tweaking on the, on the parking area, I think they have the capability.
These are, these are long walls, I'd like to see them get that first floor deck in, too.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
And what about the vertical framing?
You mean the carpenter's framing, after that?
You think you're gonna be, um.
He won't be there.
Going before January 9th?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
No, but I just wanted to know that, no, no, but I just wanted to know that, I mean, even if Nick stretches out, all I'm asking.
He won't, I don't think he will.
But say he does, I just wanna be able to.
I just, we'll give you enough to hold the walls. I just, we'll give you enough to hold the walls.
That's all I'm saying, that way we're not pressuring Nick, and you still have that extra bite out of the apple to deal with this.
Cause I guess the other caveat too is this still isn't approved by conservation, they're not gonna meet until, so it would be a motion pending.
Couldn't it be subject to conservation's approval?
Yeah, the same, motion pending approval of.
We know we have to do that too, although we were allowed to move forward with demo. Well, realistically, that's not gonna be an imposition if, if you say just what he said there.
Whatever we, whatever we give for approval before the conservation grants, they're final.
That's all it's. We, we meet two days before, or actually, the week before conservation.
So they won't be even meeting until after the night?
We could continue until the ninth, here at the planning board, let the fire department respond if they wanna respond properly.
Yep.
If there was any other board that had other comment, and if the selectmen wanted to make any other comment, we meet on the ninth, and then we can approve, whether it be a partial for the buildings alone, pending conservation approval on the fourteenth, cause their meeting's not until January fourteenth.
So they don't have a meeting between now and January?
No, cause they fall down like Christmas or Christmas Eve, so they weren't gonna meet.
We got time to do that holiday schedule, we got time to do the holiday schedule here.
Yeah, I know.
It's always the way.
Where's the fire alarm room?
Fire alarm?
The fire alarm room on the first floor?
The last spring room, maybe?
No, no, someplace in Nancy Agarpano.
So that will be right at the entrance?
Lobby.
In the lobby, in the best of deals.
You don't need a separate room for it?
No, no, it's actually, they don't want that, they want it right up, right there.
Yeah.
So what I was saying before was if, if, we can grant approval, tentatively, before the conservation, but whatever we grant.
I suppose we can do it and we just also make it subject to the fire department.
Whatever we grant is dependent on what the conservation does.
And.
I don't really, the fire department as far as the travel, yeah, but as far as the conservation goes, if, it's, it's basically all up to the, it's, any work they do out there is at their peril because the conservation commission hasn't.
Right, so if we make a motion tonight, it should just be contingent on conservation approval and fire department review.
Yeah.
If we wanna do it tonight, if we waited till the ninth.
That would be the best for us.
It would be only contingent on con con, cause the fire department would have reviewed, so.
And peer review, Nick Laney's peer review.
Yeah, we're only talking about.
Nick Laney's peer review is gonna be on the drainage.
On, yes.
So what it does.
It'll be on the drainage and the wastewater.
Pardon me?
Drainage and wastewater.
Wastewater is per the Board of Health, has he commented from the Board of Health?
They seem quite happy, went up there, we did.
DEP comment at all?
He commented before on wastewater.
You have a DEP permit?
We have a DEP permit for the water supply.
And the wastewater?
No, we had, previously had a DEP permit for the wastewater.
Yeah.
When we got under ninety-nine hundred gallons per day.
Yeah.
They said it's all Board of Health now.
Okay, so not Board of Health, have you talked to the Board of Health yet?
We talked with the agent when we had our first meeting, we have not come back with the.
The agent was out there.
Yeah, well, we'll go back and talk with the board and see what we can.
So you're still pending Board of Health approval?
Yeah.
So you're pending Board of Health approval, you're pending conservation approval, you're pending fire department approval.
And a peer review.
And peer review.
So I mean, if we do approve stuff, all pending, and you start work, for example, Nick Laney comes back and he says, you need to alter some of the drainage, and it's within the buffer zone.
We gotta come back to you.
So you understand that that's at your peril?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think it's important, if I can just add one moment, Jim and I said, it was obvious from the conservation commission, they support the project, and they wanted me to come back and, you know, tidy up the most of the tent. It was obvious with the Board of Health that what I'm doing there is compliant, and DEP was very happy with it, so I'm not, it's not like it's an unknown, it's cleanup.
Yeah.
It's more than it is like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but again, I'm trying to, as devil's advocate for you, I hate to see you go backwards on something.
I'm willing to take that chance.
Well, you don't wanna.
It's, it's money that, you know.
I know, but I trust the board.
What Mark's saying is we don't wanna blow smoke up your skirt. Pretty much, okay? Now, you get a reduction from what was being, what DEP was accepting to now what you're providing, right? So you have a reduction in flow.
That's right, we were originally, today it's twelve-five, at post, with this project it's ninety-nine hundred.
Right, you're probably gonna have a reduction in flow from the site runoff.
That's right.
Okay, so I think there's a reduction, there's a reduction, as long as you guys feel confident with the, the fire department access.
We're gonna get rid on that.
Yes, which is great, because the chief is really, really, I, he'll, you'll like him, you know, Chief O'Brien, he's really accommodating, and.
I'm a big believer in public service, I was the construction expert on Carver Fire Station that was just built, I donated my, donated my time to manage that, the public construction as a, I'm a resident of Carver. So I, so I'm very, I understand the municipal and contributions there, and I'll work with the chief.
Okay, so, would we be willing to entertain a motion?
A motion to recommend site plan approval, pending approval from the conservation commission, Board of Health, fire department, and Nick Laney's peer review?
Yes.
For the site drainage and all his review encompasses.
And wastewater.
And?
And wastewater.
I said, and all his review encompasses, so yes, wastewater as well.
Get that, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
She's good. So I was, is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I feel pretty comfortable.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for having this debate with us.
Sir, appreciate it. Can you get going, any demo, any foundations?
We got a lot of work out, I'm sure you're gonna be needing these tonight.
Takes time.
And of course, it's probably a horrible winter, top of everything else, you know, we're off to a rough start.
Winter wise.
You want me to hold on to them?
Yeah, we'll leave them all here. Keep all these here.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time we'll try and get you a lot more time than that to review.
What's that?
Next time we'll try and get plans in two weeks in advance.
Yes.
Right, Jeremy?
This is mine.
Well, next time hopefully we'll have, yeah, we'll have the jumpfire going. I'm glad you came up with that scenario. I'd rather stick with players over there.
So good luck.
Well, thank you.
Jerry? Yes. Mr. Cameron?
You ready for new business?
You got new business?
Oh, God. No, it's only three.
Okay.
And just for the record, my name is Richard Cameron, a new member of the board of selectmen.
Oh, my God.
Two things I wanted to discuss with the board, is, you know, we've had a moratorium on marijuana, you know, host agreements, and that has expired, so, and I know that the, the planning board has put together an overlay district that they wanna get approved by town meeting.
Yes.
And we talked to town council, and town council says because we have that pending, then the moratorium will continue on until we have the town meeting. Now, the question becomes, you know, do we wanna have the town meeting in February or wait till May? That's up to you guys to decide, we'd rather not do that, because, you know, the cost and getting people there and so forth, but.
Right.
But, so I want you to know that we're still protected until we have that town meeting.
That's good for everybody, right?
It's great for everybody.
It seems like attendance would be better in May, when the weather is better than.
So unless you guys want us to hold a special town meeting, then we'll.
We don't want a special one, no.
We'll continue with that, okay? I will make sure you get that in writing, so you know that.
We're not the type of people that push to get something done like.
Well, I know it's been pending though for a few months from what I understand.
But we put it out there, and then we leave it up to the selectmen to make their time.
The only thing you might have to do is have another public meeting because, public hearing, excuse me, because the six-month period would have expired, I think it's in March if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in there.
But that's a route, no one showed up to the last one.
No, but I just want you to know that we'll probably have to go through that process again.
I understand.
Yep, okay.
Is that something we should just put on the agenda for maybe January? Do you think that the town meeting would be before June?
No, no, not unless you guys want it.
No, you wait until the last, time it out exactly.
Okay.
Okay, the second thing is that from past experience, we all know that the zoning bylaw changes have a tendency to creep out, creep out, and creep out until we get close to the town meeting, so.
Then it's a hurry, hurry.
It's a hurry, hurry, and everybody's trying to hold public hearings and so forth and so on, so if there's any zoning bylaws or changes that you're contemplating, let's try to address those in January, so we don't get into, you know, April and May and say, oh geez, now we gotta do this, we gotta do that, so I don't know if there's anything pending, but I'd like to see us try to do that if we can.
We don't have any, but there's a new committee out?
Well, me and Barbara have talked a couple times.
Called Zebra.
Me and Barbara have talked a couple times about just trying to be a little bit more direct with our, the construction standards in, on commercial properties.
Architectural standards.
Architectural standards.
Yes.
That that would be a bylaw thing, her and I could work on that to try and get something done.
If you wanna do something, then do it early enough to propose it to us so we can make any tweaks to it.
Yeah.
Cause I remember Jim had done something with that a while ago, and it fell by the ways.
Yeah, would you mind just putting that on the agenda for the next meeting, just as a reminder for me and Barbara to start that process? Cause I'm sure I won't, neither of us will have time in the next couple of weeks with the holidays.
Then the other possibility, you know, is, we're trying to get information about the Lakeville Hospital, what's going on, we haven't had much luck in that, and.
Oh, I talked to them, and they're gonna be seeing us in the next couple of weeks, and.
For what?
There's a company, what?
For what?
No, there's a company that wants to come in and do some sort of distribution facility. I don't know if it's, I don't think it's the size of a Cisco.
Cisco.
But they're talking about taking the building down and doing some work with that, and they've contacted me, and I said that I'm more than willing to discuss anything they want offline or.
I could meet with, I asked them to come see you.
Yeah, but I think it's a good point, Brian, cause a lot of times what happens is the people come in and they start talking about.
Yeah.
A plan and stuff like that, it would be better to try to discuss a little bit upfront, so then you come to the planning board, you say to the planning board, hey, this is the guy's idea, this is what he wants to do.
Right.
Because if he comes in and, you know, starts talking about some plan, whatever that plan is, then all of a sudden we got everybody, you know.
Chaos.
Everybody, it's chaos, you know, and so a little more structure to that, I think would be better to do that, and, you know, actually, I heard the same thing, so.
You did?
Yes.
Good, good, good.
But, you know, so.
We need some industrial.
It'd be a good idea like, you know, maybe it's you and Nate and one of the selectmen and the town administrator to sit down and say, you know, what do you wanna do?
Would you be worried?
Oh, sure, but, you know, so we don't get into a position, this guy comes in and he says, you know, this is what I want, we're not interested in that.
Right, or, or he wants an answer like.
Yeah, well, sometimes, you know how it goes, sometimes they try to play the developers against, you know, the boards and whatever, so, most of them, hey, this guy's a good guy, done a great job, really good project.
But people like the hospital, if something comes up, I will contact you.
Okay, great.
And they said they wanted to talk to us, I asked them to come in and see the whole board, but I let them, you know, give me, you know, contact Kathy or myself, and we'll set it up, and if they wanna come and talk to me individually, I'd be willing.
Well, I mean, that's up to you, but I think that that's the right approach, cause you're not getting everybody excited about this supposedly project that's being proposed, so, well, we kinda understand.
You sort of did it actually with this John Deppis Scoly guy, where he had a sort of an informal.
Yes, he did, yes.
To do something like that with him, just to say, why don't you just come in and talk to us, after we get our hearings done, we'll just have an open discussion.
Yeah.
That he's not under the gun, he doesn't need engineers at that point, and he could just feel the board out, he could hear what he has to say.
Right, but the, but the thing with the Lakeville Hospital group, they said they wanted to take a large parcel, and I told them that if they took under a certain number of acres, was it twenty-five acres?
Yeah, but it's, there's no industrial zoning there at all.
It's mixed-use development, Brian.
Right, it's mixed-use, but if they don't have the, the correct acreage.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five acre pieces, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five acres, if they don't have twenty-five acres, it falls into the underlying zone.
Right. And the underlying zone can be changed.
Well, that.
It takes time.
That was gonna be my point, too, is if we don't have activity, maybe we ought to look at changing that mixed-use development zoning in that area.
Right.
I mean, I know that there's a couple of people that have already bought, you know, the funeral home and.
Well, the funeral home's in, in the business.
Yeah, they're not mixed-use.
Business zone.
Yeah, well, oh, that's right, yeah.
It wouldn't affect them to change.
They're in the front, they're in the business zone.
It's only that middle thirty-three acres or something.
Anyways.
Yes, I understand that, I'm trying to lead them correctly, because.
This is the one.
You got people out there selling parcels, and some of the parcels may not be falling in within the mixed-use.
There was one behind.
Oh, we had one parcel that was sold with one point three acres, can't build on it.
Right.
You know?
Not even with regular zoning.
No.
Right.
Anyways, so, so whatever we can help. You can't do. Let me know.
Thanks, Rich. I appreciate you coming in.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to improve the communications among the boards.
That's awesome.
I think it's, it's been a process.
You know that.
Yep.
We'll do what we can, at least I'll try to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You trade them something and they'll trade you.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Good night. Hey, Rich, mostly that first part of the business, that forty-eight, three, and that's why we can't do that.
Good.
I leave it right in front.
Yeah, nothing.
So, we're still on film here, that was our new business.
After that's off, I have to tell you something.
What?
That was our new business was.
Rich?
Rich coming in and telling us about the bylaw.
Yep.
Giving us an update and then talking about that.